Today, for a special meeting, and this is regarding our airport. It is June 20th, 2023. The time is 9:01 a.m. I'm calling this meeting to order. In attendance are Commissioners Brooks, Matari, and Duncan. Commissioner Brooks is joining us by phone. Are there any changes to the agenda?
[unintelligible]
All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead. And our first item is the U.S. Forest Service Fire Tanker Base. And Phil, would you like to talk to us about that?
We've been--
Can you push your-- Yeah, thank you.
We had a formal request, email sent from the Forest Service Tanker Base at Coeur d'Alene requesting future aviation development of the airport property north of Wyoming Avenue and west of Ramsey Road. Their interest in that, which is the area that currently Lake's Highway District occupies part of that.
Does the Forest Service have leases right now?
Pardon?
Does the Forest Service have a lease right now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and are they, is that property they're leasing contiguous with this property that they're looking at?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, so they want to expand into the property?
Yeah, there's a lot of restructuring of tanker bases in the U.S. Coeur d'Alene has been on the list for that for about 15 years. Recently, Congress has approved a lot more expansion money, base renovation money, and they would like to take our tanker base. Currently is set up for category two heavy tankers. Their typical contract is two per summer. They would like to be able to expand to the ability to be a schedule for four tankers and the ability to handle up to eight on a rotation basis on a Coeur d'Alene. So with the future expansion that's on the approved ALP for Coeur d'Alene, they got to looking at what possibilities there would be for them to expand and/or move on the airport, and it made more sense to them because that area on the ALP is already approved for aviation, that they, that's why they forwarded the request to move toward development of that property.
Okay. Dave, I don't know if this is, you know, something we can just discuss in public or we can, if it's executive session stuff. But I guess my question is, if somebody has a lease that's non-aviation and we need it for aviation, what happens to that property? Does the person who wants to lease that land have to buy that property by the hangars or by the buildings?
I'm not sure I understand your question exactly.
So if the U.S. Forest Service wants to expand their lease into a non-aviation area, that non-aviation area has property, has value in buildings?
Commissioner, I'd like--
Sure.
That is aviation property. That property was not taken out of aviation development.
Correct, it's just non-aviation use right now.
There's a non-aviation entity leasing it--
Yes, correct.
And in their '72 and their '94 lease, it refers to, they need to remove their facility for the furtherment of aviation development that's in their lease.
Okay, so if the Forest Service wants that property, then they have to go remove all their, the current tenant has to go remove all their buildings?
Well, we would have to, there's a process to notice the non-aviation tenant to, I guess they would have the option to either sell them or turn them over to the county or remove them at the end of whatever period it is that they were given to vacate the property.
And is there a standard period of time that people are allowed to, or given to vacate the property?
That would be a question I would have to pose to the FAA. Typically, it's 24, 36 months--
Okay.
--for given to remove.
Okay.
You looking to make a decision today, or, I would suggest you want some legal advice and follow up after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or thoughts on this item?
No, it's just, it's a, it's a much bigger issue because that land was in the airport long-term plan, and so it links us with all the grant assurances and so forth, and so there's an expectation, I think, from the FAA on how that land is going to be used. And so I definitely agree with David that this is something that we want to figure out how the FAA is going to, you know, want to proceed on this before we, before we do anything.
Okay. All right, item two, StanCraft leases. I am not sure who's going to lead us in this, but I guess Scott can start.
Good morning, and yes, Commissioner Duncan, I am going to lead us a little bit. First, thank you for having this special meeting and bringing us here. I'm Scott Heston, I'm general counsel for StanCraft Companies. Also in the room, just so the commission knows, Rob Bloom is here, owner of StanCraft Companies. Keaton Brown, who is currently standing over there, he's going to hand out, some handouts for both council and the commissioners that we put together, some extra materials that you might want to look at later. And then Nelson Erickson is also here from StanCraft. Sitting behind us at table over there is Mr. Christopher Verrallo, he's counsel for FIB, First National Bank, and then Ryan Lee is also here. He's a senior relationship manager with FIB. So, like I said, thank you again for having this special meeting. And the meeting, it came about by a phone call that Mr. Ferguson and I had along with counsel for FIB last week, which both Commissioner Matari and Commissioner Duncan, you guys agreed to let happen. So I want to say thank you for that. The communication was really helpful, and we were able to quickly get to a spot where maybe our communication early on was somewhat confusing, and so working with Mr. Ferguson together, we came to this forum to talk about these items, so that was really helpful. So what are we here to talk about? Important issues dealing with the airport, and it is airport lease, estoppel, and an addendum, or an amendment. And again, that kind of happened by the phone call that we had last week, we being Mr. Ferguson and I. And a couple of months ago, we put together, we being StanCraft, put together an estoppel document and an amendment document all in one, and that was precipitated by a communication we had with our bank, First, or FIB, and what they're trying to do, what we're trying to do is put together a debt package, and that debt package has consequences for the bank. They looked at our leases and said, hey, you know, let's hit pause for a second, we have a couple of things we want to look at. One, make sure the lease is valid and we're going to affirm it, confirm it, responsibilities that the bank has, responsibility that the county has, responsibilities that StanCraft has, and in doing so, we wanted an estoppel. There's also a couple of items in the lease that we need changed because it just won't work for our financing package. So we put those together in one document, and in May, this commission looked at that and said, hey, let's, we have some questions. So fast forward now to the middle of June, we had our phone call, and we land here where we are today, looking at two different issues, one, the estoppel, and one, some amendments. Before we jump into those two documents, I want to put up on the board for everybody to see kind of what's the groundwork, what are we talking about? So here, I've got, on the right-hand side is a map, and you can see it's the GIS map, and I've underlined in green those areas of leases that we're talking about today. There's different colors on the leases numbered, so one could go reference and find the lease we're talking about by pulling up that number that's above the green line. But we have different colors here because the blue is Coeur d'Alene Jet Center, which is merging into, or merged into North Idaho Jet. The red is our leases that are held by Triple Flight. Triple Flight is a combination of the old resort aviation that was there. It was purchased by the Rudines in the late part of 2021, and then they approached StanCraft and said, hey, we'd like to do something with you, and then we created Triple Flight, and Triple Flight now owns the leases on the red side. That's the resort aviation-jet center LLC property that was there in 2021. That joint agreement worked out at about the end of 2021, December of 2021, where we came together. The blue is the CDA Jet, now North Idaho Jet property, and looking back even further, that's how we got into this business. StanCraft purchased Southfield. Southfield now has where No Limits is, the Fuel Island, the Selcher Fuel Island, and then subsequent to that purchase, StanCraft builds up to the north, you can see the fuel farm, so we invested quite a bit into the fuel farm up there, and then as you all have probably seen, the jet center itself, we built that jet center as well. So those are the leases we're talking about today, and I think it's important just so everybody has an idea of what, what they are, who they are. What are we doing? Well, we're trying to refinance, so that's a lot of work from 2020 to 2023, putting up a multimillion-dollar building, putting on a fuel farm, joining forces with another company, the Rudine Company, making Triple Flight, and then putting all that together. We have different pieces in moving and different financing packages that make that happen. So what we're doing now is we're trying to consolidate, bring it all together, recapitalize the business model we have, and one, create an operating line, we need to keep going with our business, and so FIB has partnered with us in that. So the bottom line is, this refinance is good business planning for our business, and I think it's good business planning for the businesses on the airport. Our goal, StanCraft's goal, as I think everybody in here knows, Rob Bloom is from Coeur d'Alene, and he and Amy have a third-generation business in the Hayden City Limits in Cootney County, and they want to do good business in Cootney County. That's their goal. They want to bring businesses to Cootney County. That's their goal. They want to bring quality, well-paying jobs to the people of Cootney County. So all of this to say, that's where we are on the map. Those are the businesses and the leases that we're talking about. What we're trying to do is consolidate, and our goal is to bring business and jobs to Cootney County. Our proposal, what are we talking about then really, and what am I asking this board to do? Two things, I want to deal with an estoppel, and I want to deal with an amendment. The estoppel confirms the validity of the lease and each party's rights and responsibilities to that lease. Our rights and responsibilities, what are they? The counties, what are their rights? What are they entitled to? What do they have to do? All of that to say that the bank is going to say, we want to make sure this lease is in place. If something happens, if it doesn't happen, we want to know that the lease between the county and StanCraft is valid. That's an estoppel. The next thing we're looking to do and asking this board to do is make small modifications or make modifications to the existing leases. There are two of them. We think that the amendments are for the good of the airport, the interest of the future development of the airport, and the addendum, we want to do an addendum to potentially all of, well, all of our leases, but potentially for the airport, all of its future leases as well. We think this, we've come across something that will make it better for future tenants. Changing language in particular, and I'm going to get into this more detail in a certain paragraph, that changes language to the appraised value of capital improvements. And the next addendum that we'd like to do amendment is to a few of our leases, and I've identified them there, the 600 and 700, those are both Triple Flight leases. We'd like to extend those leases, the life of those leases, to match what we have on the other side of the airport at 25 years. It's a consistent, consolidating, putting a consistent package together for the bank. Those are the two requests that we have today. All right, not to just rehash old things, but again, the estoppel. On the phone call last week, Mr. Ferguson and I, we talked, and it was my understanding from Mr. Ferguson that if it's an estoppel and you're not changing the terms of the lease, we're just saying the lease is valid, he's in agreement. Okay? So but for the proposed amendment modifications we had in that estoppel agreement, I think we're on, we're on an agreed platform here. So we agree the rights and responsibilities of StanCraft Jet Center and Triple Flight LLC, those are the two tenants, and Cootney County, that they should be affirmed and be part of this financing package. Are there any questions that the commissioners have on the estoppel that I can answer at this time?
Dave, has he seen the one that you forwarded to--
No, that was--
For us? Okay.
Okay. Onto the next point. Amendments to the current lease. So the, the lease duration is one of the issues that I want to talk about. We've, we've got two leases that have terms that are less than 10 years at this point, and those are both on the Triple Flight side. Our financing package is going to need to be longer than that period of time. The second amendment I'm looking to do, again, to kind of go over it again, is the lease term restriction. Financing can only be obtained on the original construction cost of the improvements. In our case, that's the FBO and the related facilities. So looking back to the map, the Triple Flight project, those are not new buildings. Those buildings are built in the 90s, and the capital costs for those buildings are different 30 years ago than they are today. And what the lease says is, we can't refinance those leases, or we can't refinance our debt using those leases in excess of what it costs to build those buildings. So today's value doesn't count. It's yesterday or even decades ago value that counts for the refinancing package. That's in section 27L of the lease. Those are the two amendments I'm looking to talk about today.
26L, that's the one that principal amount of any mortgage must not be greater than the original principal amount--
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there may be some that say 27 because some of the leases are different, so--
Fair enough.
My, my, thank you for correcting that, David. Okay. First, the lease duration. Here's a lease duration that currently exists. We've got a six-year term left and a seven-year term left over on that Triple Flight side. We'd like to extend that to a 25 and 25. Questions on duration? So we're back and looked in the May 29 meeting, and Commissioner Matari, you had a good question. What happens if the lease is shorter than the financing term that the bank gives us? It's an excellent question, and the, the result is, one, the bank's not going to do that for us, and, you know, counsel for the bank can probably fill that in if you, if you added a question on that, but they're not going to loan on something that they can't have security in, meaning that once the lease terminates, the rights of the bank also terminate, because the county owns the land. The rights that the tenant have are only as good as the lease, is only as long as the lease. So we, as a tenant, cannot give a security interest in a lease or the right to pay and the right to receive business to something we don't have. So if the lease terminates, we can't give it to them, pass the termination date, and they can't receive anything past the termination date. It reverts back to the county. So in answer to your question from May 9, Commissioner Matari, it dies. So with that in mind, the bank says, Scott, we're not loaning, we're not loaning to you unless you can get the leases at least as long as the debt, because we lose all rights to help find someone to go fill the space and make our money back. So county controls the land through the term of the lease, and post-term of the lease, the lease controls its relationship. Where the lease terminates, the bank no longer has rights in replacement. So the bank in this case is requesting that the lease term be at least as long as the amount of time that we're financing this debt. So reasonable business decision from our perspective, and I think for the county and for the airport, is that the lease get extended for the, at least the amount of time of the debt. And I think in this case, that's nondiscriminatory, that's allowing us to do what we want to do or run our business. If you say, no, you can't do that, we're not going to extend it for your debt, you're effectively cutting our ability to get financing, preventing our ability to do business, which I think is a, at least reviewing the assurances would cause problems for the county by saying, no, we're not going to allow you to do that. Now, there's a broad discretion, and the county has the right to make decisions they want, and we are in a different dispute, discussion, legal position later on, but for now, I think it makes good business decision to extend the term of the lease for at least the length of the financing package. We're asking for a little longer just so it is consistent with our other leases for the other businesses we're running on the airport. And I'm going to point out section 27L, Mr. Ferguson pointed out 26L, there are different numbers in a couple of different leases. Knowing, and I'm making representations to the commission now, that I'm intending for the lease that Mr. Ferguson has in front of him that says 26L, that's my intent. So I'm referencing 27L, but those leases that call it 27L, I want that. The ones, leases that call it 26L, that's what I mean. So the financing restriction. Here, the financing restriction, as you read through this, or as one reads through this, I've highlighted the portion below that I think is, is most important to us in the discussion point today, that reflecting, excuse me, that however, that with respect to financing described in clauses two and three, so two is a refinancing said construction mortgage, and three, providing financing in connection with assignments and transfers, we're more looking at two. So the principal amount of any mortgage must not be greater than the original principal amount of the mortgage obtained to construct the development, including any additional construction or alteration thereof made subsequent to the initial construction as provided. A lot of words to say, you can't refinance for more than the initial construction cost. So we're, and then there's, there's a caveat underneath those paragraphs that talk about the restriction, the restriction, so, so that the mortgage, whatever your mortgage in the lease is at, in no way infects or diminishes the county's interest in the premises. So there's a caveat to that restriction, right? So the first part of the restriction is, you can't refinance it for more than the construction cost so long as it doesn't impact negatively the county, and under no circumstances is county's fee interest in the premises or rights under this lease subordinate to said mortgage, right? So we can only refinance if these items are also true, okay? Which is the case currently. We have a mortgage on one of the buildings, right, on our lease. So it's, it's currently in play that way, and my, my speculation is that other people who have bought hangars on the airport have that same mortgage. So this is happening all over the place, the county is not being subordinated by doing a mortgage on a lease. Remember what I said earlier? The lease, the county owns the land, the lease is the lease, and the lease says that at the end of the lease, the county gets the land back, it reverts back to the county. So proposed change in language, what are we looking for really? This is my proposal that I think works, and the top one is what we want to change. The bottom identifies the new language that I think makes sense. So reading the top one, we just read it, but it says, "The principal amount of any mortgage must not be greater than the original principal amount of the mortgage obtained to construct the development, including any addition, construction, or alteration thereof made subsequent to the initial construction as provided." The red areas, I propose to delete. The new language, "The principal amount of any mortgage must not be greater than the appraised value of the development, provided." The green areas are what I propose to replace the red areas with. So the "provided" references those two elements that I talked about before, provided that the county doesn't give up its fee interest in the land, provided that it doesn't subordinate, which it already does not do. Okay? That's my proposed modification. I think it's simple, and I think it works for the future, and I'll explain that in a little bit in the next couple of slides. Subordination and grant assurances. Those are two words, well, a word and then two words together, that have big impact on financial institutions, on the county, on the FAA, on businesses doing, business on the airport, and I want to kind of go through those a little bit so that, that I'm trying to communicate what I think I understand in those two major areas. There were questions raised in conversations on the phone, as well as, I believe, in the May meeting about subordination. It's also in the leases, don't subordinate. So what does subordination mean? And I'm by no means trying to belittle, but I just want to boil it down to simple ideas and concepts, because that's how I process things, to place in a lower-class rank or position. That's what subordinate means. The estoppel, what does the estoppel do in this case? It affirms the existing lease. It preserves the status quo. There are no changes in positions with the estoppel. Done. Grant assurances, what are they? Well, there's, there's a lot of learning that needs to be done, and the FAA is this big world, and there's a lot of federal regulations, and there's the CFRs, and there's the FARs, and there's a whole bunch of acronyms that talk about aviation. But essentially, once an airport receives FAA grants to do work on the airport, they subscribe to the assurances, which mean we will do certain things. We take your money and we will do or we will not do certain things. It's a nationwide set of assurances. It's published. It's something that every airport does that's 139, every airport does that has federal grant money. And then we also have to talk about possible aeronautical uses. It was even discussed this morning with regard to the Forest Service. The general guiding principle of the grant assurances, it's an airport sponsor to have accepted FAA grants, we just said that, for federal surplus properties obligated to use dedicated aviation facilities for aeronautical use. What happens if hangars are not reserved for aeronautical use? What happens to the federal airport grants funds that could inadvertently subsidize a non-aeronautical user, and aeronautical users could be denied access to needed airport facilities? That's the fear. I mean, might as well get it out. If we are violating the grant assurances, are we in trouble to have to pay the money back? What is our obligation when we talk to the FAA? Really, in this case, what's the, what's the question that we're, we're trying to answer? Really, if StanCraft defaults, right, if we don't pay, the bank's going to do something. What are they going to do? Well, through a receiver, because the bank doesn't take possession, the bank's in the business of running a bank, they don't run an FBO, right? They don't service airplanes, they don't de-ice airplanes, they don't fuel them, they don't provide services to pilots. What they'll do is they'll get a receiver that says, let's go find an FBO operator, let's make this thing keep going because we have a lot of money at stake, the airport needs an FBO that's going to-- The airport needs an FBO that's going to run. This is the FBO currently. We need to make this thing happen. They need the ability to step in and do that and say, here, receiver, go take care of this, find an FBO provider, service provider, and run this thing. It helps the county, it helps the bank. So they'll find a replacement tenant. When they find somebody who comes in, they find somebody who says, yes, we can do that, whether it's a national, whether it's somebody else, what are the process steps? What are the securities that the county has to make sure that they are okay with this process? Paragraph 25 of the leases say, "Any sublease or assignment is only with county permission." The bank says, with its receiver, county, Commissioner Matarri, Commissioner Duncan, here, this is who we found. We want them to take this over. And at that point, Phil, or if Phil's not here anymore, somebody who's in Phil's spot, will say, we think they're a good fit. Let's either accept this lease and assign it, or let's do a new lease with new operator. That's what's going to happen practically. So the question about assurances and subordination, it's not here. It's just not here. What happens, I just went through it. We breach, we default. The bank says, Scott, you need to go write us a check. I say, I can't. They say, okay, we're going to go find somebody to do it. They find them, they come back to the three of you. Commissioner Brooks, I'm sorry, I haven't intended to leave you out because you're on the phone. So they come to the three of you and say, hey, here's what we found. You guys get the ability to say, yes, or no, go find somebody else. In your packet in front of you, there's, and I can show you there, number 14 CFR, Chapter 3, A, B, and C, FR 81, and then the page number is 38, is 38,910. It's in your packet. The question is, what happens if the user is not aeronautical? It's a non-aeronautical use. And what we've, what we're concerned about is, does that cause the county to write a check to the FAA or have a problem with the FAA? The answer is no. Because the FAA knows this happens. And they've, at that citation, I've included it for you, it says that a sponsor, which is the airport, would be considered to have FAA approval for non-aeronautical use in each of the following cases. There's three of them. An interim use, a month-to-month use, or an other use. I didn't go through and write out what's in there. It's in your, it's in your packet there. But those are three areas in which the county can, as, or the airport can, have a non-aeronautical use sitting in the FBO at Stancraft Jet Center if it needed to. So if the county wanted to continue to receive its rent on the property, and the bank wanted to put somebody in there to make sure they got their note paid, and it's a non-aeronautical use, it's possible. Okay? It's possible. I bring up number 22 of the grant assurances. This is one that is often pointed to and is important. It's essential. It's what other people want on the airport. I mean, the advisory board looks at what goes on around the airport, and they want to make sure that the 150 driver has the same abilities as the G-550 driver does. And so here, economic nondiscrimination assurance 22. I make these points. Following what we're doing, what I'm asking, we'll make the airport available as an airport for public use on reasonable terms, without unjust discrimination, all types, kinds, classes, aeronautical activities, including commercial, aeronautical activities, offering services to the public at the airport. Summing up, at the bottom there, I have in C, they're changing the language that I've requested in your leases in the future, well, one for us currently, but for all of your leases in the future. I believe, to the appraisal standard, will remove any discrimination that will be, and in the county then will be in line with the grant assurances. Because right now, the retention of the language, that restriction that is in the, in the existing lease, will discriminate against those who don't have disposable cash. That 150 driver, who wants his small plane to be in a hangar, if he doesn't have the price, the cash in hand to go pay for the hangar, and a strict adherence of the lease, he can't refinance that 1974 hangar, that 1990 hangar, that 1999 hangar, that 2010 hangar. He can't refinance that for more than it was purchased, for more than it was built for. So if the build in 1985 is $5,000, and the hangar today is a $50,000 purchase, you can't refinance it for more than five grand, with the way the language is currently written. If it's appraised at 50, and you change the language, now you can buy it for 50, and the bank can finance it. But the way it's written now, it's not doable. And you're just, the count, I don't mean to accuse you of that. The application of this language will violate, I believe, in a sense, the 22, the grant assurance number 22, economic discrimination. Because those who don't have cash can't have a hangar. Come back to my proposal. This is what I'm asking. I'm asking that the county confirm the validity of the lease, each party's rights and responsibilities in signing an estoppel. I'm asking the Board of County Commissioners to approve two amendments to our leases, all of our leases. That for the good of the airport and the interest of the future development, to add the addendum that we go to an appraised value of capital improvements for refinancing purposes on leases. And then for a limited number of our leases, that they be extended to be consistent with our other leases so that we can do this debt financing package. And again, I come to the county, and I come to Mr. Ferguson, and I apologize for the timing of my earlier document and the inability to properly communicate these elements. It was very helpful when Mr. Ferguson on Wednesday last week said, hey, you're looking for two things. Give it in two steps. Come to the board and ask. So with my hat in hand, I come to the board and say, this is what we'd like. And I think it makes sense, not for us, or not just for us, it does make sense for us, but not just for us, but for the county and for the 150 driver, who wants to have a hangar next week.
Bill, do you have any questions?
I do not. I thought that was an excellent presentation.
Okay. Bruce.
Yes. So I understand what you're proposing here is something that we would have to offer all the other tenants on the airport.
I think when people come to ask you, Commissioner Matarri, then you can make that change. If you wanted to go, it would be a Herculean step currently to go take every lease that you have and change it. But I think you can offer this to every tenant on the airport.
The way I understand the grant assurances is that we can't have different leases for different tenants, is that we have to, we have to offer the same terms to all the tenants. If I'm not correct, David, do you have, I'm sorry, Phil?
Yes, we have to be, non-discrimination. We offer it to you, we have people offer it to anybody else that has a lease in the field.
Which is why I said I think all of your leases should have that language change.
And, and so, in essence, what would, what would one consider the trigger to offer that language? Would it be because the tenant wants to refinance their, their existing hangars? In essence? If we were to offer that?
I think if, if someone came and said, I want to refinance, well, there's, there's a literal reading, if I'm following what Phil just said. One, the county could say, we're going to make this change across every lease tomorrow. And that, I believe, is a Herculean step. It, it could be the appropriate step to do. I just think work-wise, let me hit pause for a second. The FAA is not draconian. The FAA, the way they, at least from the tone of the assurances that, as I read them, they're not draconian. They understand that you have to run a business, you have to run the airport, and you, you have to be reasonable. Reasonable is used a lot. So, yes, make those changes for everybody, but you don't have to do it tomorrow.
No, no, I'm not suggesting we change every lease. I'm just saying that if we were to offer this to you, at that point, we would have to offer it to all the other tenants.
I think it makes, I don't think, whether you have to or don't, I think it makes sense to do it. So to answer your question, yes. I think we should.
Well, you know, the way I kind of see that is that it actually kind of, it, it subordinates the county. And I'll give you an example. Okay? I'm at a year 39 of two 20-year leases. You know, first 20-year, option to renew, I'm on year 39. I want to stay there. So I have a way now where I can extend out my term by refinancing my hangar and forcing the county to have to accept it based upon the terms of my financing, my debt. So in essence, the county, because we offered it to you, would now have to accept the same terms to any other tenant. And in essence, it becomes a way for them to continue maintaining their lease, even though there is a finite period of time when those leases end.
I respectfully disagree. Well, first, let me hit pause on that. Are you talking about the, the modification to the 26L or 27L paragraph? Or are you talking about the amendment that we're requesting to extend our, our lease term?
Well, the, the amendment to extend the lease term. In order to get the financing, the term has to be extended.
Yeah.
And therefore, that would compel the county to have to extend the lease, even though they may not want to.
Yeah, no, you're making a point, except I think that you're not subordinating at all.
Well, we don't have a choice if the tenant decides to do that.
I don't think so. You have a choice right now to say, no, Scott, I'm not going to grant you the extension on those two leases. Done.
No, but if we do, if we do grant you the extension, does that not open the door for us to be compelled to grant the extension to other tenants in the same situation?
I don't, I think the word compel is what's getting me to say no. I don't believe you're compelled to do that. You can, you're making a decision each time you sign a lease with any tenant, whether you want that tenant or not. And the business choice of whether that tenant is cash flows, whether that tenant has the ability to pay, whether they are going to be, you know, you can't get too much into their business operations because you're nondiscriminatory. But does it make sense to rent to that tenant for the use of the property? Is it aeronautical use on the taxiway? Is it not? Is it off the taxiway? Is it non-aeronautical? And then you can make a decision whether you want to rent to somebody or not. And so by us coming, and I think this is a great position that Mr. Ferguson made on the phone last week, you're asking for an extension. It's different than anything else. So you need to ask the board for an extension. You guys now have the discretionary authority to say, nope, we're not going to grant you those extensions on those leases.
Well, I'm not so sure that we can use anything other than, you know, legitimate reasons to say no. I don't think we can have that kind of discretion when it comes to the tenants. David, do you have some thoughts on that?
I, I do. I think it probably is a business decision in, in most contexts to renegotiate the terms of the lease with the tenant. In other contexts, absent some other authority than the FAA, it just, it would be purely a business decision.
No.
Your opening the door argument is a good question. I personally don't have any experience with whether or not the FAA would consider it a violation of grant assurances to make a business decision in this case, and thereby have to apply it to all other tenants. I don't read the grant assurances that way. But Phil may have a little more knowledge about this. But I could see how another tenant may say, well, you didn't afford me the same opportunity that you did Stancraft or some other lender slash tenant in some other case. So therefore, the county should be stopped from allowing me to, to do the same thing. I'm just not aware whether or not that presents a FAA problem or a legal cause of action problem that's related to some other tenant at some future point. It may. Phil might want to weigh in on that. But like I said, I'm, I'm not sure I, I read the great assurances to be so. Draconian's a good word. I'm, I'm not sure that they're draconian in that sense. I, I think they do allow business decisions to be made, but I think we probably want to look at that opening the door piece a little more carefully.
Yeah.
So Phil, I don't know if you have any thoughts about that.
Well, one of the things that we need to keep in mind that in any point in time for the development of the airport and aviation, they may request that, especially in the case of a, of a non-aviation, the lease be canceled for development of, of lease property for aviation. Also, as far as an aviation lease, they may be asked by the FAA for development that that lease be canceled. And of course, that facility moved elsewhere on the airport. And these things are done all the time. Big airports, small airports. Four, because 40 years ago was in the right place, today it's not. It needs to be moved. And that's why the FAA really is the ultimate authority to this. Now, you could, you could add number 10 to this, Scott, and say this, this estoppel is subordinate to all federal regulations and FAA sponsors' assurances. It would have to be. You know, what you're saying here, that termination, we can't terminate without the written consent of the lender. I'm not sure they're going to buy that. I am not, I'm not an attorney. The county has one of the foremost legal firms in the country on retaining, Kaplan and Kirsch. I, I, you know, we could package this up, we could put number 10 in there, make it subordinate to all federal regulations and FAA sponsors' assurances, spell out the fact that the, this does exist in Cootney County on the Coeur d'Alene Airport, Pappy Boynton Field, a federally funded public airport.
So I, I respect your-
You know, we could send it to Pete Doyle, who's the head of regional compliance, as well as Kaplan and Kirsch, and get their opinion.
You, you can, for sure. And I respect your comment. The, if you, one also looks at the lease itself. The bank is, that's what the estoppel says. The bank, the bank gets to only do what the lease gets to say it does. So if the lease says you get to terminate based on a war, the, the lease, I mean, you give the, give the bank notice, we got a war, and we're terminating.
I have some other comments, if, unless you have other questions. I didn't, I didn't want to just veer into those other comments with your prior question, Bruce.
The only other question I have is typically there's a good reason why language is put into an agreement. And so I'm curious why, why, if anyone has an idea, why the language is put into 26L, 27L, that says you can only finance, you know, the construction costs. Now, the way I understand it, and, you know, and I'm a little bit new to the FAA stuff, but I'm, I'm picking it up here, is that the FAA wants airports to be able to grow. And they recognize the fact that not everyone has the cash to construct hangars and businesses on the airport. And that's why they allow the financing in the beginning, because it's the beginning of the lease term. And typically, from my understanding, our leases are 25-25, option to renew for the second 25, which is more than enough for the financing terms. I think the FAA prefers 20 and 20, because 40 years is their, their horizon for long-term structures like that. And so that's why they incorporate, why, why we're allowed to have this in our lease. And so why would we not include refinancing? That occur, that has been occurring in property for decades and decades. So, so I'd like to know why that language was put in there to begin with, and why it doesn't allow appraised value.
I would too. I think it should be appraised value.
Well, I think it's important at least to understand why the language is put in there. Because I can't imagine it was done with zero thought. Dave, if you want to go ahead, please.
Oh, okay. Well, as far as your last comment, I personally don't know the exact reason. I didn't draft these leases. They were purchased as a package from an aviation law firm out of Minnesota, and approved by a prior board. I can only suspect that, I suspect that that term was included to apply to a particular property that was financed probably close in time to the lease, not some old lease or an old value from decade, you know, years or decades before. So with that in mind, the appraised value term seems like it's- So with that in mind, the appraised value term seems like it's more of a business decision for the board to make, at least in this case. I, I don't see how it really have any FAA nexus other than some vague discrimination nexus when it comes to other tenants, like we've talked about already. If another tenant wants to refinance and they have an older property that has gone up in value, it only seems reasonable to allow them to refinance at the current appraised value. I can't imagine, I, I can't come up with a business decision not to do that.
Unless it extends the lease term.
Well, I don't know. I, I think those are two separate issues, quite frankly.
Yeah.
And what we were getting at earlier about extending lease terms and opening the door, I think is a different, it's a different legal issue. If they're at year 39 of the two 20-year options, I'm not sure how changing the appraised value term affects granting a new term to the lease. I don't think it does.
Yeah.
I think those are two separate issues. So I, I've kind of, I had some comments about those. Going back to Scott's presentation, it was helpful. It, it's more definite than I think what this purported estoppel certificate, what the language in it purported to do. It's, it's, this estoppel certificate has some more vagueness than what Scott presented today. We had the discussion late last week, so that, that's why we're here, and I think it's good that we're here, to understand what it is precisely that Stan Kraft is proposing. But back to the estoppel certificate for a moment, it's more than an estoppel certificate. It's not simply a verification that the tenant's leases are valid and not in default. It, it does a few more things, and I shared some of my comments with the board already in, in the revisions, but I just want to point out that there, there are some terms here which are not just extension of the length of the term or change of the appraised value terms. There's more going on here. Section, sorry, paragraph five of this estoppel certificate talks about termination of the lease pursuant to subsection 26 not being effective without prior consent of the lender. When I use the word subordination, that's mostly what I was referring to. Puts a lender in the position equal and really greater than the tenant's position. The tenant's in default somehow, now the county can't terminate. It specifically says, including termination, shall not be effective without the prior consent of the lender. I, I think that's a problem, and I've pointed that out. Paragraph six talks about amending the lease and needing prior consent of the lender. The county's on a lease with the tenant, not with the lender.
What section is that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's paragraph six.
Six.
Yeah. The lender really shouldn't, never have control over a lease in that fashion. If the parties, landlord and the tenant, want to change the lease, that's up to them. If the tenant then has a problem with its lender because it changed lease terms, then that's a problem between the tenant and the lender. I would, I would, and I think it may be a grant assurance problem to put a lender in between the landlord and the tenant and, for FAA controlled property. I think that's a problem. Paragraph nine, again, the word subordination is being used kind of loosely, but in the sense that it's, there's a language here that, if there's a conflict between this certificate and the lease, that the terms of this estoppel certificate's really an addendum to the lease, is really what it is. That the terms of the addendum or the estoppel, estoppel certificate controls. So, and, and again, I, I don't think that should be the case. The, the lease is the lease. The lender should not be in a position to modify or, or have say-so in the lease between the landlord and the tenant. If, I, I, I think some judicious, careful revisions to this certificate, along with a couple of other term changes, if Scott wants to present those, I, I think this can be sort of pencil whipped into shape. I've already proposed some of those changes to the board. Didn't share them with, with Scott or, or, or the counsel at the bank, because I was giving advice to my client. But I, I felt it was worthwhile to share some of those thoughts here. You know, provided that the board comes to some kind of this decision about the, the two requests on the extension to the, to the lease length and the appraised value term, I think these other, these other terms can probably be worked out. I'm hopeful that, that they could be.
To, to respond-
Those are my thoughts. Yeah.
To respond, the, I think, as I pointed out initially, it's very helpful to us commissioners when you authorized us to communicate with Dave. We get a lot more done in a 15-minute phone call than we do drafting each of us, you know, half an hour's worth of emails and then going back and forth and waiting a couple days. That really is a, not a good use of time. So I, I agree with Mr. Ferguson in that the estoppel issues, the estoppel issues can be resolved, I believe, with counsel as we talk through it. We can argue as lawyers about semantics, because that's what we do. And, but in reality is, I think the three of us on a phone call or in a meeting can get that resolved without, without too much delay, so. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah. The only other comment I have is just, you know, right now I'm dealing with a number of issues at the airport. And a lot of these issues are the result of prior boards and even commissioners getting involved and, 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 and making changes or, or trying to, to do deals like this. And, you know, in the end, the FAA is the one that has to green light these things. We can, we can argue all we want, and I'm not averse to this. I'm not averse to this at all. But what I don't want to do is for the board to say yes to something, only to discover down the road that it becomes a problem with the FAA. And unless we have counsel that is well-versed in FAA rules and regulations and grant assurances, I would be reluctant to want to say yes to this. And that's really my only hesitation. I'm not averse to it, but I don't want to create a problem because we're, we think we know what's right, but we don't know we know what's right.
Yeah. Commissioner, I'm, I'm an advocate. I mean, I'm working here. My company is asking the commission for something, so. But I do say that, that in response to Mr. Ferguson's comment on the package, the purchase package of the leases, boilerplate often gets caught in the way of reasonableness. And so if a package is purchased from some other real estate or aviation firm that was used for some, from airport someplace else, and, and a commission did a really good job in the best they could, a group of commissioners, to, to buy it and then approve it without understanding all the, the details, that happens. So boilerplate, I think, can get in the way or get caught up in and swept in. The FAA is, I believe, in the document that I referenced for you on non-aeronautical uses, the FRs, it's very broad in what this airport can do, and the FAA is not going to be draconian. I'm going to give you a little bit of a background. I spoke yesterday with a, a counsel on the East Coast. She was not available for today via phone. And if we need to, and I get authority to speak with Mr. Ferguson, we can include her in on a phone call. Her name is Shelley Ewald. She's on the East Coast. She has a lot of experience and does, deals mainly with this type of leasing, this type of assurances. And a summary that she gave to me over the phone was, the amendment of the leases and extensions is within the discretion, discretion of the airport and will not violate grant assurances as long as it's reasonable, financially sound, and in the airport, community, and FBO operators, Stan Kraft, best interest going forward. The FAA allows for the airport to make such decisions within general confines of the grant assurances and regulations. She was not able to write that down on the letterhead for me yesterday because it was Juneteenth. She was out of the office. But I can, if given the authority from this board, have Ms. Ewald along with Mr. Ferguson on the phone, and we can work through some of that detail. So-
Just curious, is there any other airports that are doing this?
Interestingly enough, we looked at Idaho Falls, who also is 139, and they do not have this term in their lease.
No other airports, though?
I don't know.
That you're aware of, that are, that are allowing companies to refinance their, their assets, their debt?
Air, all, all airports are, I shouldn't say all. Most airports are allowing in their ground lease for the financing of the lease itself for the construction and the refinancing of the buildings on the airport. That's a regular business move. It goes back to the discrimination issue. If you don't do that, you're discriminating against those who don't have cash.
No, no, I meant any, any airports doing what you're proposing, what you would like us to do.
I haven't seen a lease that does what I, what I've said. I'm trying to keep, you changed the lease, you, I would prefer you take it out, but I'm trying to come up with a solution that works keeping it close to what you're looking for and not changing your document too much.
Okay. So can I make a suggestion?
We're talking about the appraised value term again.
Yes.
Yeah, just to refinance at current market value.
That's correct.
My call may just, I think, I really do believe it's-
Your microphone, sorry.
Business decision?
I'm, I'm not certain that, you know, again, the term is probably there because financing was close in time to when the lease was executed between the parties. I can't, I can't say it makes a lot of sense in a business sense. You know, the, the length of term issue being a little bit different issue, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a suggestion. We are running up against our next meeting, and we do have a presenter that's supposed to be here. So I would suggest that we pause this meeting, go into executive session after our 10 o'clock meeting, and Phil, if you want to appear by phone, you can do that, if you don't want to wait around or come back. And then we can have our executive session with legal counsel on what, you know, his full advice is. He's given a little bit, but full advice. Then we can then say, okay, yes, please, Dave, meet with Scott, get this worked out. This is the direction of the board, if that makes sense. So any objections to that?
I don't have a problem if, if the attorneys work it out, get it out to the bare minimum. But I do think we should run this by the FAA first.
Yeah, so that was my other question is, but not being in executive session and not coming to a path, would be that once we get the language that we agree upon to send it to, is it Doyle? Peter Doyle?
Peter Doyle.
Compliance, yeah. So yeah, so send the language to him and say, hey, what do you think about this? And let him know that, you know, it is a bit of a, we'd like an answer sooner than later if possible. So I know he's busy.
I'm only going to represent the county governor, which is why I suggest that Kaplan and Kirsch, being so you have one in town.
Sure, your, your microphone, sorry, Phil.
Sorry about that. That's why I recommended Kaplan and Kirsch representing the county. Pete Doyle represents the FAA, and I'm not, I've never had to do this before, so I, I'm not sure what kind of response we would get, and that's why I suggested that we send this to Kaplan and Kirsch for their review.
Sure. But we still have to come to a, a decision on what we are going to send to them, is the issue.
I will say that, I don't know exactly what the FAA will say about this, other than they're not legal counsel for the county or the airport.
Right.
So if, if, I think if they say anything, it's going to be very kind of tightly worded, and they may not, they may not opine at all, because it gets into the realm of legal advice, so, just a caveat.
And from our, from Stan Kraft's perspective, we do have a time issue here with the financing package, which will significantly change the cost associated with this project for us and, and be harmful to our business. If it's possible that, that counsel, Mr. Ferguson and FAA counsel, without going to the FAA, the FAA is a, a great organization, but they take a long time to do some things. And if counsel for the county says this looks pretty good, and our counsel, the deals with aviation-specific things says it looks pretty good, I'd like to see us move faster than going to the FAA.
Sure. All right, is that all right? So we'll recess this meeting until approximately 11:00 AM, and we'll go into executive session at that time. Is that all right?
Okay.
All right, thank you.